Good evening, everyone. To clear the meeting open and advise that Karen City Council is sitting as planning authority this evening. Acknowledge before proceeding, the Tasmanian Aboriginal community is the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet tonight. We pay respect to elders, past and present. Also advise the meeting that the meeting is being audio visually recorded and proceedings will be available on the Karen City Council website later this week. Moving on to item one, apologies. We have apologies from Alderman Richard James and Alderman John Peers. Item two, declarations of interest of Alderman and Close Associate. I'd like to declare a possible perceived interest in proceedings and I'll be in item 3.1 and will be leaving the meeting for that and handing the chair to Deputy Mayor Alderman Campbell. Are there any other interests to declare? In that case, moving on to 3.1. Thank you, Alderman Campbell.
Well, move to item 3.1. A development application, 2016, 5438 Gordon Hill Road, Lindisfarne Retirement Village. Mr. Sullivan, Q6, second to Alderman Dowell, Q6.
Hi, it seems to say, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It's obviously a facility that's well needed in the area. I know there have been some representations mainly around flora and fauna that they seem to have been adequately addressed. And I think it's clearly a development that's made it.
Thank you, Alderman Hampson.
I agree with that, Mr. Mayor. I think that this is a great asset to the community and as such, I'd fully support it. I think that if it's not developed, of course, it's cut off from the rest of the people's goal. Of course, it would have had them on the way. I think that if you couldn't get a better development than there is now and future development, one might be so good. It's really good to see this.
Yes, look, it's been pointed out the design makes sense and it's been pointed out that this is a facility that's, you know, growing even in the municipality. Just want to add whilst there is lots of need for such facilities, rarely does the opportunity arise for them to be placed so close to services. And that's a real plus for their style of development as far as social connectedness, access to services, dividends. So it's the right development in the right location.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do support the application in the sense of the accommodation units. However, within the context of the report and the outcomes, I'm not happy at all. The natural environment is again being denuded in an area which is close to a natural area which has been used for a large percentage of time by native flora and fauna in the area. The assessment by the Natural Values Report, which was prepared by EnviroDynamics, may not have found swift parrots sitting in the trees tweeting away because they only seem to habitat these areas when the trees are actually flowering. And the capacity for these trees to flower on a regular basis is not something that's norm. They only flower every five to eight years. So within our area, our council area and other councils, you know, right, trees have been planted over the years in specific locations because that is where they are on flight corridors or there are other animals and birds that habitat those trees. And when a food frenzy occurs due to flowering, that's when we find the birds. Again, we have let down an endangered species by this application, not being asked to assess or plant blue gum trees in an adequate adjacent vicinity to make up for the fact that they are cutting down over 20 mature blue gum trees. And I find this a disaster for that area and that natural environment. And in that context, I am very embarrassed by this council's inability to really put fire to diversity at a full form.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, we all note the highly successful retirement village that has been created on the other side of the road. We're all aware that there's a massive waiting list for occupants. And it's been a highly, highly successful. It's actually made the area look far neater. It's actually tidied up that side of the hill. And I anticipate that this development will do exactly the same thing. I do note Alderman's concerns and I think every effort should be made where possible to retain blue gums. And I note in the report that where possible, the blue gums will be retained around the perimeter. And where possible, this development needs to take into account the natural environment that it's going to take place in. But I think the report has adequately covered and this proposal receives my approval.
Deputy Mayor, in relation to the particular development that we're actually looking at, obviously it's an extension of an already successful development. And it's important to note that the Positive Aging Advisory Committee believes that aging in place is an important aspect as far as a community is involved. It certainly is a development where aging in place is going to occur because it is the trend, if you like, for older people to actually downsize. And this means that people can actually do that while still having a home that they feel comfortable in. So I actually support the application.
I'd just like to ask a couple of questions through you to Mr. Lovell. The ecologist assessment, what sort of qualifications are needed for an ecologist to provide an assessment to support a report, to support an application like this? What is expected of them? And in the representations received, were those representations accompanied by a similar sort of report by suitably qualified expert or were they what could be described as sort of a layman's assessment?
Yeah, they were qualified responses. But if I go a step further, we then referred to the independent state body, which is the Threatened Species Protection Act in Australia.
So basically, on this issue of threatened species, we've had a couple of conflicting opinions, one from the developer and one from the company. What the planning staff have done quite properly is gone to seek an independent opinion from the state government authorities, suitably qualified independent experts there. And I'm satisfied on the basis of that. And, you know, I would not, and I don't think other organizations should, well, unless they have certain qualifications, environmental management profess to be experts on this area. And when we're not experts, I'm nearing, we do need to defer to the proper expertise. So I support the development.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a question in relation to the traffic management, which is obviously an issue in this area. And I know the provision that you ran about, which is excellent. Marked on the plan is a future DSG roundabout, which is obviously for the ramps of Gordon Hill Road, potential ramps of Gordon Hill Road. I understand there are some negotiations potentially about that because obviously that could cause a trouble bottom there. And I wonder if there's some information.
Well, good evening again. Sorry.
We'll edit about that.
Yeah. I think that is important, but yeah. Well, good evening again, colleagues. Welcome to the Karen City Council Special League. And we try to clear open and once again, colleagues, the Aboriginal community as custodians of the land on which we meet tonight and pay respect to all who passed the president. And in the absence of any members of the public, I probably don't need to remind you all that it is being recorded. Item one is apologies and we have Alderman Peers and Alderman James. Item two, declarations of interest of Alderman or Close Associate. They're being none none and there's nothing at item three, clearly. Item four is Taswater ownership and the agenda provides an A or a B. And the chair welcomes a win you view.
I would perhaps, having now heard the chairman's presentation tonight, like to change my recommendation to just B. But I'm, if you don't wish to proceed as appeared in the agenda, that's fine with me. But I just, I wrote it fairly ambiguously on the basis that...
It may well turn out that way, TM, but I think it is now just for the meeting to propose A or B and we'll debate that. And Alderman Campbell, you proposing?
I'll propose item B, seeing that I've got to go on first, I had to defend this. And I think that the...
Can we have a second, please?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you, Alderman.
The chairman of Taswater certainly gave an excellent summary of where we're at with the whole thing and where it's come from. And that, and I'm totally opposed to any government taking over these things. It's been proved over and over and over, over all the years, governments are just not up to running businesses. They messed up, I've had a list of them, but it's endless. So, and I recall being back in the days on the Metropolitan Water Board and that failed dismally because they went and borrowed money overseas again. And then they found that 10 years later, they had to pay it back again. They had to pay about three times as much. So the government couldn't get rid of the water corporation quick enough back in those days. And I think that alone's enough to say it's just absolutely the wrong path to go down. So I hope that we've got unanimous support for this motion.
Mr. Q6?
Now, look, there's no viable modeling being made available. I don't believe it exists. But it seems amazing to me that if viable modeling, financial modeling was available, then it wouldn't have been provided to at least to Elgat and to the particular council. The minister, whilst he's guaranteeing future dividends, cannot commit future governments of his side or the other side to pay dividends to council. Minister slash end all premium won't be there, probably won't be here, say 10 years or whatever. No responsibility. So if the cost to consumers goes through the roof, they'll be out enjoying the sunshine on the Gold Coast or somewhere. And from that perspective, it's just bad for Karen residents.
Look, I, we all heard it tonight, the presentation from the chairman of Taswater. I'm recording, I think it's important to put on record some of the facts that he put forward. For example, he mentioned the statements about the treasurer representing some kind of infected crisis in terms of Taswater and talked about where Taswater is and where they're actually tracking. And, you know, the statistics speak for themselves. 96% of Tasmanian residents used to have water that was up to the Australian quality, water quality standards. It's now up to 99.2%. There were 25 boil water alerts taken off recently. And there is a timeline to fix the rest by August 2018. He addressed the treasurer's statements about compliance of sewage plants and said they actually, the compliance guidelines are so strict that almost no sewage treatment plant anywhere in the country would comply with them because they do 52 tests a year, weekly tests along eight different parameters. And if one out of 416 tests fail, that's considered to be noncompliant, which, you know, some of those parameters aren't even issues that will impact on the environment should the sewage treatment plant be noncompliant. Now, Taswater has a timeline, they have a plan to address the issues that are remaining. And considering the number of assets they have to manage, compare them to other water authorities, water corporations on the mainland who don't have to manage as many, you know, per head of population, water treatment, sewage treatment beds, you know, various assets that obviously need to be consolidated and who are 10 or 15 years ahead in terms of water and sewage reform. You know, they've got quite a task and they're doing it with distinction. They're doing a really good job under those difficult circumstances. So we know that there is no crisis in water and sewage in Tasmania. And what the treasurer proposes as a solution would actually make the situation worse because it would saddle the corporation more debt than they're able to handle. It would cause a situation where they're trying to address the capital expenditure and infrastructure issues so fast that they wouldn't actually be able to get the skilled labor to do it unless they imported vast amounts of labor from interstate. So it's an absolute pipe trend. You're going to take what is a reasonable sensible 10-year program and try and compress that into four or five years. Now, what I'm saying, we all know because we saw that presentation, it was a very good presentation. But I think it's important to reiterate all those facts just to get them on the public record for anyone, for the public is watching and wondering, you know, why, presuming we go ahead and endorse the recommendations being moved, why we are making the decision that we're making tonight. I don't believe there's a crisis. Even if there was, I don't believe the treasurer's solution is a solution. Of course, we should oppose this takeover. Thank you.
And I am of the belief that the key indication is that Taswater has gone to the state government in the past for assistance, have received no assistance whatsoever. Obviously because the treasurer, the government at the time, saw no crisis, so they didn't need to assist. Now, there's a situation that's arisen that they claim there is a crisis and we have not seen any evidence tonight. I think the crucial thing is that some of the benchmarks for compliance are based on too rigid criteria compared to other jurisdictions. And so therefore, the impression can be given that this corporation is not meeting targets correctly. But that is, that is based on statistics, which again, as I said, are based on too rigid criteria. The important thing to, and I mean, this is obvious with the sewer road flows, which they claim are seven times the national average. But again, Taswater chose that their benchmark would be so much lower than anybody else. So therefore, it gives the impression that the situation is worse than what it is. Taswater can quite comfortably and professionally manage our water system. I can't see that this is anything other than a political issue that at this particular time, the government seems to think that it can come in and rescue something that it claims is crisis when in fact it's not. I think this is more to do with the fact that the state government has said they won't take over to 2018 when so much of these problems will be fixed with the pot of water. So by the time they get it, there will be no issue in that respect. But they see this very much as a cash cow down the track. And I think that that is where all the hard work's been done by Taswater. Someone wants to come in, take over and say, look, you know, this is going to be good for us in the future. I oppose it.
We don't have access to the government's financial modeling, but from a financial point of view, I cannot see the logic in what they're proposing. So they're talking about reducing revenue by capping includes to a lower rate than the regulators currently hold for it. That may happen anyway. They're talking about increasing costs because in order to get work done faster, you're going to have to bring in more people. There will be more costs if we have supply constraints, as Alderman Q6 mentioned, both in personnel and potentially in equipment. That tends to push prices up. They're talking about borrowing somewhere between, you know, if you've got a gap between your revenue and expenditure, you're going to have to borrow to fill that gap. Yes, we have historic low interest rates at the moment. That's not going to continue forever, however much we may all hope that will do if we borrow money rather than lend it. You know, there will come a point when those costs will escalate. And if Taswater as an entity loads up in debt, the users, our ratepayers, are going to have to pay for that at some point in the receiving. It may not be today, but there will certainly be increased costs down the track. Cannot see a descent from it at all.
Mr. Mayor, the other Aldermen have made very detailed and pertinent points. I think it's important though to note that Mr. Hampson actually made it really clear that three regulators, Otter, EPA and DHHS, have all assessed the plan and found it appropriate. And that, to me, is a very crucial aspect. And the fact that there is a plan, the 10-year plan, which has been modeled in a very detailed way is also very important. I think the other point that came across for me in the presentation is that if the state government actually is to take over water and sewage, then there's no guaranteed outcome for local government and its community. And that we may, may receive six cents in the dollar. I think that's a very important aspect to keep in mind. Thank you.
Three, Mr. Mayor, to the rest of the Aldermen. I think it's important that we want to clock back to the 2016 federal election. Ladies and gentlemen, there is no issue in order in the state of all. The most pressing issue facing this state, according to both major parties, was to move an indulged monopoly university's campus several kilometers down the road. The most pressing issue for the state apparently is moving buildings that actually were moving the campus down. That apparently was the biggest issue facing it. It buys my mind. But anyway, several things I want to just put on record or get some clarification. I wasn't on this council when this council managed the order of sewage assets within Clarence. But I'd like to just get clarification either on the general manager or someone else. What level of return was of the assets generating? And what will we use in whatever that level of return or...
Three, Mr. Mayor, there are statistics and statistics and whatever. The commonly accepted return that we were receiving, and I think was that by the, who was that? What was the body that was doing this?
National Competition.
The National Competition body. And we were averaging a return of about two and a half, three percent, I think, is sort of in ballpark of what the return was. And all of those funds were being returned to the Warrens or account, the Capital Works. And this is the way it was. It wasn't being used to pop up the rate base. It was there to keep the assets ongoing and renewed. And that's why I've become a little bit focused on dividends because we never used to have an interest in them. And if we still had the assets, we wouldn't be doing that. However, this feral, alien entity was sired. It was sired without international economic rigor. It was done completely ignoring examples like Scotland where the three waters were included, but not Taswater or the Water Corpse in the intersection. Some Mandarin genius has decided that the storm water should be kept excluded, which meant structural inefficiency from the get-go as councils then had to get a new set of hydrological expertise because the others had gone with Taswater. And that shouldn't be the one. And yet, it is written, erased from the history of how these entities came into being and those that are created that shouldn't be able to get away with the amount of fees and it's all just, you know, ineptitude. So dividends matter now because there is a repugnant moral hazard voiced upon Clarence ratepayers to copper, subsidize and bill elsewhere for other parts of this state that either didn't invest a cent, under-invested, wokenly mismanaged or in the case of some small communities, were never able to do it. But in such cases, really elsewhere would have been seen as a responsibility of the state. So that's why the dividend flow is an issue of interest. When it was created, the book value assets by Clarence was deemed to be around $2.40 million. The last report we had was around the $1.66, $1.69 million mark. Now, that's on a heavily depreciated basis. I don't believe that that's going to... Now, that's on a heavily depreciated basis, I don't believe that that's the case, but let's assume that that $1.66 million is about where they value. A true takeover, and I'm not totally opposed to it, the difference between a takeover versus asset seizure is that in any takeover, in a corporate sense, you're paid out for the value of your asset. So if there's a check offering for $1.66 million, I'm really happy to talk to the state government because that's the value of the assets, that's what the assets, what was created by the Tas, not the Tasmanians, the Clarence ratepayers, who were paying, as we've found out, you know, the cost plus two, two and a half percent. They weren't, you know, there were plenty of entities elsewhere that were, you know, having lower, if you like, water bills as a result. So I've got to say, I'm not particularly happy to having to be the guy, you know, rushing the charge to defend Taswater. It is not the opportunity to prutch, and quite frankly, I think the CEO has probably got the toughest utilities management gig in the country, and I don't begrudge his adnits, but really, the fact that as owners we can't vote on the remuneration package or the other structures that you get in an ASX thing is not right, and there is room for improvement within that structure. And actually, what possibly would improve things is more decentralization and more ability for us as local government to give some stronger direction around supporting capital to that entity. I do, I...
What else did you wish to say? Would I require my... Oh, sorry.
I was just waiting, sorry. I truly support the remuneration. Right from the start, I've been anxious on this government's proposals to do anything to help the community, from my personal view, I want to see that DSGBE actually achieves it. So from the report that we've had given to us, it actually states that there has been an increase in drinkable water from the tap from 96 to 99.02%. And in comparison to other states, we are on par with them regardless of size of state. The government proposal hasn't had any modeling or data to stack it up presented to us. It has only been based on their interpretation of the Taswater data, which highlights the negatives rather than positives that the company judged. From my perspective, the government proposal also leaves it up to the minister to make the cost of any increases on his own personal recommendations, which then are not followed by explanation nor the regulator's advice. The proposal, the process with Taswater, however, is open and accountable through a board process linked to the independent regulator, and to that degree, I support this project. The proposal states, the government's proposal states that they will save residents' water money by making the cost of the water cheaper, but the Taswater modeling shows that any government changes would actually create more debt. And the comparison was given of a $1.5 million government debt versus the $900 million water debt. For me, this is just another beef up, another fear campaign leading up to years of no state elections, and let's hope that we can just keep doing this.
Alderman? And thank you to the local colleagues for this call, some valuable input into this, and we could go on the rest of the night, we're not going to, and I'll just touch on a couple of things on the way through where the government's messed up, and they will again, like the rapey treatment plant, council rebuilt it approximately 10 years ago, housing department, council contributed to build the original there, they just pushed more and more housing in there, and the council wore it, otherwise words, our ratepayers. We've paid for this once or twice before, just a thing in passing. And on the, it's 98, 99%, 99.2% as it is now, there are nine to get that last 2% over the line, it has cost $23,500 on average per person, not per property, per person to do that throughout this state. If our community, if that information was paid to them and understood, they wouldn't have far as, they did that, understand where those people over the river would take us again. And the other idea of ramping up to employ a lot of people, that's great in theory, but there comes an end when they've got to go somewhere else, and that's when it gets nasty. I've seen it happen, I've seen governments do it, oh, build this, build that and that, and then, oh, what can we do with all these people? We're going to have a employment program, something expensive, take it through gently, and they've got a good plan, there's lots of improvements that can be made at Taswater, given the chance. I've been a critic at times, a strong critic, but it's a lot better than what the government could have done. A couple of other employees, and the government people have been with us over all those years, and that can rightly say, we expect better standards, somebody has to come. And as far as comparing Tasmania with some of the other states, I want to look at some of the hideous mistakes that have been made, 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 the desalination plants in particular, some 300, 400 million in Victoria, so that, this is the sort of thing that governments do, and Sydney one, in fact, probably don't know because people are required, that outfall the Bondi where they're, one of those night plants that Miles mentioned in Sydney comes out there, but a mile down the coast, they pump the water in for their desalination plant. That's how smart some governments are when it gets up to sewage water, so I know you're all going to support it, and I'll certainly be pushing it on Thursday on the council's record. Thank you.
The motion before the chair is B, that council proposes to propose Taswater by the state government. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much, and we'll clear the meeting close.